September 19th, 2017, Riverton City Council Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:45 PM. The Chair would entertain a motion on the consideration of claims.
Go ahead, Tim. I'll meet you.
Your Honor, make a motion for the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $303,285.3. Manual checks in the amount of $216,083.74. Payroll liabilities, payroll slash liabilities for August 18th, 2017, in the amount of $442,828.51, for a total of $962,197.28.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions?
This was something we actually discussed before the meeting, but I guess just in case anybody was looking at this and was curious about it, we had discussed the, on page five, I think was claim 26, 2612, is that what the claim number was? I had noticed that we had made a payment to CWC for masonry work from Delvin Hyatt to repair an enclosure, and you'd indicated that was to repair some damages that were caused by city employee then.
We did, and actually, the payment was made direct to Delvin Hyatt Masonry for work that he performed at CWC. There was a sanitation truck that had an accident with the enclosure that protects their garbage container, and so we had to pay for the damages to get that repaired.
We got it fixed.
It is fixed.
Okay, and we're not going to have to deal with that kind of a problem again, hopefully.
Well, hopefully.
Okay, that's the only thing I had.
Okay, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. And do you have anything else?
The only thing I have to add is I know you are anxiously awaiting for the fiscal health report in October. It's hard to believe that three months have already passed by in this fiscal year, but that's what you have to look forward to in October.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Then, meeting is adjourned.
... United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet as a city council. We ask that it please help us tonight as we consider the city's business, that we can have our minds enlightened to the needs of the citizens and the needs of the staff, and that we can know the choices that we can make that will better serve the needs of all. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Lance Godey.
Present.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I am present, declare that we have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented with the removal of the eclipse debrief, item number 13.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, the motion passes. The next item of business is communication from the floor. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the record.
Well, I think you all know me, but I will identify myself, Jim Davis with the Chamber of Commerce. I thought I'd probably come night and night and mention that, or bring you up to date on our live at fives for the summer. I think they were a success. We, of course, would have liked bigger crowds, but they grew every session we had. The last one was probably the most successful one that we did right before the eclipse. Everything went really well. We, everybody behaved themselves. We had a couple incidences, not with the people that were attending the event, but other people that were in the park, and the PD responded very well and took care of them for us, but we kind of expected some of that was going to happen, but it went very well. I don't know if there's any other questions that you guys might have, but we felt that it was a success, and we're probably going to give it another try next year. We haven't quite come to that decision yet, but we'll be back before you. And some of you attended some of the events, and I think that the people that did attend enjoyed the music and the food and the beverage, so I think it was a success. Any questions?
Lance?
Your Honor, I don't, maybe, not sure if I have a question, but just wanted to send along my appreciation. I attended all of the events. I was very happy and pleased, love to see it happen again next year, and just wanted to make sure you knew from me that it was much appreciated.
Well, I think having it in the same spot for all four of them, now, we probably won't do four next year because we added that last one because of the eclipse, but we'll probably do three, and I think having it in the same location probably, you know, made it a more, you know, successful venture, and that people knew that that was where we could go and do it. And the first one was, you know, not quite as good as the second one, and was right down the line to where the last. Of course, there was a lot more people in town for the last one, too, so it gave another opportunity for our visitors that were here to have another venue to go to, so. But I was really pleased with it. I think everybody that attended were pleased, so.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
You bet. Good evening, Ron.
Good evening, Mayor. How are you?
Great.
Good. Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and fellow citizens, this is an issue I'm not sure how appropriate it is for me to speak on behalf of, but it's something that I just personally have to do. So, I'm taking this opportunity to raise my voice in opposition to the closing of our Safeway store that was established in 1942, the year of my birth. If you do the math, it figures out to 75 years. I realize that I have no more power over this decision than you, but I must express my strong feelings on this bad action. For mortals, there's nothing that we can do about our loss of existence due to age. That will be my reality in the not-too-distant future. I feel it more and more each day. For a business or corporation, that is not necessarily true. If you would like an interesting read, go on the internet and look up oldest companies in the U.S. Caswell Massey was established in 1752, and is a good representative example. It's a soap and perfume manufacturer in Newport, Rhode Island, that is still in operation. Lewis and Clark had their products with them when they were exploring the West. I only bring this up to point out the fact that there is no reason in the world that we as a community should not be able to find a way to keep our Riverton Safeway store open and running. For the parent corporation Albertsons to so casually say that they will be closing up shop after 75 years in our community is unacceptable. Their reasoning is that it is an underperforming store. I can assure you that if the community had been made aware of their financial condition, many of our shopping habits would have changed. My wife and I are not Safeway shoppers, but if given the opportunity to help keep Safeway open, we will be. We do most of our shopping at Smiths due to convenience, a block away from our home, and Walmart due to price. We have no particular allegiance to either of these other good stores, other than as noted, and we would be happy to change a percentage of our shopping to Safeway in order to keep this store alive in our community. This is very important to save the many jobs for our fellow citizens and the many taxes that Safeway generates. I am sure that there are many citizens that feel the same way Helen and I do, and would be willing to help. If the city can take $200,000 out of its general fund to keep an airline alive in our community, they can take a stronger positive position to save our Safeway. I'm not suggesting that we subsidize Safeway with city funds, but to this point, I have heard of no public effort to help. The city and our economic arm with Mr. Kevin Kershishnik, as well as Mr. Jim Davis at the chamber, should be doing everything they can to keep from having another empty store on our main avenue. Perhaps they are, and I'm just not in the loop, but I've heard nothing. It's much easier to keep a business running than it is to create a new one to take its place. Randy Tucker was correct when he said, "When Safeway closes, a part of our community will close with it." Please tell me what our community with the city and its economic arm is doing to help save this business and these jobs and tax base that has been in our community for 75 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. I'm sure that we share your concerns over this. I can tell you that Mr. Peterson, who used to be an employee of Safeway, has been in contact with upper management. I've got calls into them, but I haven't had them return to me, and I know Kevin is working on it. So, we've tried to make contact with both Safeway and Albertsons to see what they've done. It seems logical to me that they would try to put the store up for, sell the business, so to speak, and try to get a different grocery store to pick it up and that type of thing, but we don't have any kind of support for that. I don't know, the comment that we got back from Mr. Peterson's contact was that the store's been losing a million dollars a year. Yeah, so, very difficult, and I, and I, and I, you know, if, I think if our, you know, community was just a little bit more busy and vibrant, maybe this wouldn't be the situation, but at the present time, with downturn in, you know, the minerals industry, that probably affects retail sales all over town. So, I don't know what we can do to compel them to stay here, if you know what I mean.
Sure.
Yeah.
No, I understand.
Yeah, but...
It just seems like we're just happy to say, okay, 75 years, good luck, and walk away from it.
I'm with you, frustrated.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ron, for your, for your well-thought-out remarks.
I promise you, I won't open all that for you guys, I promise. My name's Johnny Sweeney. I'm here with a real emotional issue, so I want to, first and foremost, apologize if I get emotional. I'm glad to see the Chief here. He's someone that I wanted to be here. This is regarding civil order in our county, our city. I talked to Mr. Menford on the phone, and I think he has a pretty good idea of why I'm here today. He spoke diligently regarding line of chain because of his military background. He asked if I had gone through the police, if I had gone through city attorneys, attorneys, to make sure that this issue was heard the right way, so I made sure not to waste your time tonight. I'm in a lot of intimidating company, so I went ahead and typed this up, so I apologize. I'll be reading from the screen. But, like I said, this is regarding civil orders, and to some of you, this may not seem like an issue. I know Mr. Hancock deals with it daily, but I do believe there's a serious hole here, and hopefully my story will help someone, if not myself. So, first of all, I really do appreciate getting the platform, being here today. I'll keep this as short as I can. It's a long one. But I do, I admire each and every one of you and what you guys do. It can't be easy coming here and having to deal with everyone's issues every week. I think that's admirable. I will explain my appearance in a moment. I'm normally a shirt and tie guy. Hair's done, and, but I'm using it to prove a point. Just so you know, I stand here today with my four-year-old, who turned four on September 11th, missing, and I have no idea where she's at. She's gone, and I have primary custody. I've had an order signed by a judge from our county since March of this year. Been fighting for two years throughout seven counties. She shows up with our PD, and my daughter's gone. I want to know who enforces civil orders in this county. That's what I want to know. Where does our money go when we pay attorneys and we go to court? What happens when a civil order is violated hundreds of times, not just once, guys, hundreds of times? Where do we go as people? That's, that's my question for you guys today, and anyone can take that question, including Chief.
Well, I don't have, I guess I don't have an answer for you. If you're, if you're waiting for us to answer that question right now, I can't answer that without doing some research.
Can I ask why? Because I'd like to, if I can, I'll tell you, I'll tell you a little story.
Well, let me, let me, let me preface that, or clarify that for you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The Riverton City Council doesn't enforce those kinds of orders.
I understand that.
Okay, and so, when I say we don't know about that, that's because it isn't anything that we're involved in, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I understand. And, and, and I want you to know that I'm here today because I'm reaching out for help, and if you guys let me tell my story, you'll understand why.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. As I told you, I have primary custody of my daughter. I have fought my butt off for this, okay? She's my everything. This order has cost me and my family everything. I've lost my business, my home, my car, my things, because no one enforced my order. I've been to jail several times, harassed for months because no one will enforce this order. This order, whole page is worth $50,000 worth. It's useless, some of which I'll probably never be able to pay back to some very good people that worked diligently to help me. This order has been ignored and broken over 100 times. Sorry. This order has done absolutely nothing but take and take and take. It's put my daughter in some absolutely abnormal spots, scary spots. I almost died because of this order. Feel free to research K2 News, you can see the story yourself. I broke my back in two spots, herniated two discs, broke my pelvis, so I had to work for a year and a half. This order has taken five attorneys to get, and it's never been enforced by law enforcement once. My daughter has been kidnapped three times now because of this order, and continues to be gone. She was taken from my own home last Thanksgiving. It was missing, going drug house to drug house because of this order. I've gone to these drug houses. I've kicked in my share of doors. If I'm guilty, fine, but I have given, been given no choice. I personally walked in into Nautrona County, DCI, after I found out that when I almost died, it wasn't an accident. They were the first ones in my hospital room when I woke up, and they told me that it wasn't because of anything I did. It was because of a hit. I was worth a whopping thousand bucks. I have not seen my oldest in two years because of this order. I'm here today to ask for help. I'm out of resources and help. My family has nothing left, and my daughters don't even know each other. The state has taken the stance that I am fit to have primary custody of a three-year-old, not even seeing my 12-year-old. The state has taken the stance that a judge's orders signed in our very own county are useless. These showed up at my house the day I was taken to jail, September 8th, for breach of peace and unlawful use of a telephone, for expressing my deep concerns for my daughter's safety to an officer. When I awoke to police already standing in my home that night, they were with somebody that I can prove to you right now, I already asked the city to help me with. I asked the police for help, I asked the court for help, because I knew she was up to no good. I applied for a protection order. That protection order was dated August 22nd, and I filed it ex parte. I sat there and watched my three-year-old be taken out of my house at 10 o'clock at night by someone who lives 150 miles away, one way, by somebody that these in front of you are her police reports over the last 16 months. I have another 150 here from Nautrona County. I tried explaining to the police that night that there were orders in motion that are just taking so freaking long to get through our court system that they don't understand. My motion for protection was never, ever signed until my daughter's birthday, September 11th. If you read my motion, you will see that I tried everything I could, everything I could to get the city's help, to get the police's help. It's in black and white. I describe everything that I'm going through right now, that I'm talking to you about right now. That was signed September 11th, my daughter's birthday, long after everything hit the fan. I could go on for days, and I don't want to. I just want, I want some help. My daughter's been taken from her school, her home, her life, her friends, her teachers, and I can't get anybody to help me. I don't even know where my daughter is, because they won't enforce civil orders. Now, to me, it may be an open-ended question, because I can't get anybody to answer my question. That's why I'm standing here today. Nobody can answer it. There is nobody. You spend all this money. You trust all these people. You go get these orders that are signed by a judge, and you trust that they're going to stay, and instead I continue to do this. I have to hire an attorney every time something happens, and there's over 100 provisions in one of these clauses. There's no stop. There's no end to this, and I don't have any help. Right now, we stand here as I filed a missing persons report. The Riverton Police Department took that report, and they helped me. They got the answer, that they contacted the mother. She gave them word. This person gave them word that she's okay, and that she would have to talk to her attorney. I still don't know where my daughter is. RPDD doesn't know where my daughter is. I don't know where my daughter is. Nobody does, and I can't do this anymore. And enforcement of civil orders has got to stop. We need somebody. Otherwise, you're asking us as people, you're asking us to enforce this on our own. When you call and ask for help, when you write and you go and you do everything from A to Z, and you ask for help, and they turn around and deny you because you filled out the wrong form. I called for two weeks asking if it would be filled out, if it would be accepted, and all I ever got was that it's sitting on the judge's desk, only for this to happen. Did I lose my cool on these officers? Absolutely. Absolutely, I did. I'll be the first to admit it, but I promise you, nobody here knows what it's like to go through what I've gone through, to make sure my little girl is safe, and to make sure she has a normal life, and to watch her be put into a stranger's car at 10 o'clock at night by somebody that I just asked the city to help me for is appalling. I don't know what else I have to do. I don't know what else anybody else wants from me. I can't hire anyone else. I can't do anything else, and I sure as hell can't provide you with anything else. This little girl, if this isn't proof enough, is not in a good spot. And like I said, am I guilty losing my cool? You betcha. And I've apologized. Personally called and apologized, spoke with detectives that were there that night, and explained to them, because I knew they didn't do their background on, on everything I'm going through. But I believe it is our job as our community to do something about this, because there's no way I'm the only one going through it. There's no way. I mean, I have a $50,000 useless order. I have a little girl just hanging out doing who knows what in our house. It's obviously not good. That being said, I'd love to work with you, if anyone wants to help me. I could really appreciate it. I don't want to work against you. I definitely don't have anything against anyone. I'm, I'm just a bit worn out by all this, and it would just be nice if somewhere, someone would help, because I've tried the courts, and they're not working. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sweeney. Okay, Mr. Sweeney, I guess what I could say is that you've, we've given you, you've given you about 15 minutes of television time? Okay?
I'm on TV.
You are, you are. Okay? And, you know, and we have the press here, you know? And so you've certainly had an opportunity to make your situation quite public, okay? But, you know, if we're talking about orders from district courts and circuit courts that the city of Riverton has absolutely no control over, okay? The only thing I can do is to assure you that I'll visit with the chief and make sure that the actions of the city police department were appropriate, okay? And, and so we'll look at that aspect of it. But apparently, we've got some conflicting issues here that, that, that we can't quite come to grips with. So, but, but there's a lot of stuff that you're involved in here that simply doesn't involve the city of Riverton.
I, I would, I would totally agree with you.
Okay.
Like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm a, I'm grasping at threads here.
Okay, so. I'm sorry for your circumstances and the difficulty that you're under, and, and if there is something that the city can do that you can identify, you know, that we have, you know, some legal power to be involved in, we'll try to be involved in that.
Civil orders, that's it.
Okay.
I mean, that's where I'm at.
So, and so, other than the fact that our law enforcement people sometimes are involved in serving those or being involved in those, they're carrying out the orders of a court that, that apparently has made some decisions over which we don't have any control.
Well, now, I guess that's my, that's where I started my question, is who does have control? Because I, I have clear, I'd signed by the judge. I mean, I have custody of my daughter, and I don't even know where she is.
See? Okay, so I don't understand, I don't understand where the problem comes in. I'll check into that.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And we've certainly given you exposure, okay?
Yes, sir. I know, I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else to talk to the?
Good evening. My name is Nancy Sweeney. Hi. I'm also Jonathan Sweeney. I don't want 15 minutes of your television time. I don't need even to be on television. What my son is asking is for civil order in the county to be stopped. The police officer needs to check the paper when they go to somebody's house, to check the paper, who has a custody, who doesn't have a custody, who has a domestic violence, who does not have a domestic violence. That's what he's asking. He's asking the council member to check into what the police officer in this county can do and cannot do. Apparently, for most of you know, these police officers walk into the person's house without the warrant and walk in and take somebody's child. It is your job as a council member to stop this. They cannot do this. This is Fourth Amendment. It is unconstru, ah, sorry, excuse me, I'm very nervous. But this is what he's asking for. What is civil order? There is a county attorney here, he can order, answer that question. Civil order is not in any other county in Wyoming. I have checked into it. It's not in Natchon County. It is not in Glen Rock, in any Sheridan, nowhere else except Riverton, Wyoming. The police officer can walk into your house because somebody else said, "I want to go get this," and help him get that, without checking that person's background, without checking that person's potential if they can have that kid at 10 o'clock. That's what he's asking for. He's not asking you to help him get his child back because obviously, the police officer right now, we have filed missing police report, we have filed everything we could. Nobody can help us.
Okay. So, so what I told him, and I'll tell you, is that we will investigate that with our police department and make sure that their behavior and their activities are appropriate.
I will appreciate that, sir. That's all we're asking for. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Okay, would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minute, September 5th, 2017, regular council meeting. Approval of the minute, September 19th, 2017, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations for September 19th, 2017. Approval of the municipal court report for the month of August, 2017. Adoption of ordinance number 17-017 on second reading, and I'll read that by title only. An ordinance amending Title 16 subdivisions, Chapter 16.16, design standards, Section 16.16.020, streets, alleys, and easements, adding 16.16.020 in street design criteria, and repealing Section 16.24.010, Appendix A, street cross-sections of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Adoption of ordinance number 17-019 on second reading, and I'll read that by title only. An ordinance amending Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare, revising Chapter 9.08, offenses against public peace and decency. Section 9.08.200, public intoxication of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Adoption of ordinance number 17-020 on second reading, and I'll read that by title only. An ordinance amending Title XV, Building Construction, Chapter 15.04, Building Construction and Maintenance Codes, Section 15.04.010, A10, adoption, applicability, filing of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Are there items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor, recommendations from the Finance Committee for bills to be paid in the amount of $303,285.03, manual checks in the amount of $216,083.74, payroll liabilities for 8/8/17 in the amount of $442,882.51, for a total of $962,197.28.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Mr. Bailey?
Your Honor, I would abstain from the Bailey Enterprises and Lex items on the Finance Committee report.
Thank you. All affairs say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next item here is retirement recognition for Jim Waterson and Sandy Lures. Could we get the interim city administrator's report, please?
Mayor and council, I am very happy today to present Jim Waterson and recognize him. Jim, do you want to come up? Jim has been with the city for 20 years. He started in 1997, May 1st, 1997, and just finished his years of service with us last month, so 20 years of service with the city of Riverton. Jim has held a few positions with us and, and received three promotions during his tenure with us. And I think of note, Jim operated our tub grinder operations for the first 10 years of its existence. Now, I stand corrected, 15 years.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
We need to be accurate.
Does he? Does, does he have any battle scars or entitled to a Purple Heart?
He might. But I, I do want to explain, because tub grinder is such a counterintuitive word. This is nothing to do with bathrooms, nothing to do with tubs, but it has to do with our yard waste operation. So, that service that our city loves of getting their green waste out and collected, Jim ran basically the large piece of equipment that ground it down into something that was manageable, something we could sell. And he did that for a lot of years for us. Outside of that service to the city of Riverton, he also has operated garbage trucks, dump trucks, graders, backhoes. What else am I missing? That, anything that we've got, he operated. Loaders, yeah. So, great employee, great service to the city of Riverton, and I'm very pleased and honored to present him with a watch, thanking him for his service. On the back, it does detail who you are, but more importantly... You ever lose this watch, still know how to find it, but more importantly, your years of service and your, your title that you had at the time of your retirement. On behalf of the city of Riverton, Public Court Department, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Great job.
Make a pass, make a pass up here.
We're gonna miss you. Best luck. You better.
Jim, congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, as with Kyle, it's my honor and privilege to recognize Sandy Lures tonight. Not many people know what attributes we ask for in a public servant, but I can tell you the two that I look for. I look for humbleness, because we serve others before we serve ourselves. And we look for generosity. Generosity when it comes to time, because it takes a lot of time to be a public servant. It also takes a lot of effort, because we have to serve and we have to be right every time, and we have to follow the book. And so, those two attributes, I can guarantee you, is what Sandy has done in the last approximately 20 years as a public servant. Come on up, Sandy. Sandy served four years on the Board of Appeals, and then she served four years as an elected official on the council, and then the city decided she was worth keeping. And so, she came to work for the city, and she's gone on nine years with the city. I think, and Don, if you would come up as well, please. I know this is... As public servants, our day doesn't stop at the end of the day, because we have spouses like Don, who Sandy can go home to and relive the day, rethink the day, bounce things off of her spouse of many, many years, and he's a solid support for her. So, when we hired Sandy, we hired a partnership. And so, I think it's important to also thank Don for the time that he has committed to his wife being an excellent public servant. So, with that, Sandy, this isn't a time for tears, this is a time for joy. This is another journey, and it's going to be a long one for her, and it's going to be a wonderful, wonderful journey. So, Sandy, we do have a gift for you, but it's in the mail, sorry. I'm so sorry. So, in the meantime, we are presenting you with roses and want to thank you so much. We will be having an open house for Sandy to recognize her years of retirement. That's going to be the 29th. It's a Friday. Sandy's going to be having surgery next week on her hand, and then she's going to come back and be able to shake hands and say goodbye. So, I think that's... Kristin, what time is that? Noon? We decided to do it during the workday where people could attend, so we're going to serve a light snack as well as cake, so we hope the public is, will attend from noon to 3:00 on the 29th and say goodbye to a very wonderful public servant and her spouse.
I need to add something, if I could, Mayor and Council. Through all these years that Courtney just explained to you, I've been on the other side working with Sandy through all the Board of Appeals and on the council, and now in her current position. I just wanted to get up and say I wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say just a few words. I, I've actually been privileged to have this job here at the city of Riverton. I mean, it's, it's been a great end to what I think feels like a very long career now. I worked for a construction company, and I have to really thank my former employers, Wayne Major and Wayne Major Jr., for giving me the opportunity to learn all about construction and the codes and all those types of things that I did for 30 years. And it gave me the background to then serve on the Board of Appeals. And then, I have to thank Bill Urbikite and Mayor Vincent for convincing me to run for council. They came to my office at Major's Equipment and convinced me to put my name in the hat. They talked about it before, and I just wasn't quite ready, and, and by that time, the city was really in a pretty good place, and I felt that I could possibly go ahead and do that. And, and that was also a very enjoyable time. I learned a ton about the city at that time, so I learned about the political side, you know, and I had already had probably the construction side. So, when I put all that together, then I applied for the job that I have now, and it has been a great job. I really, really do enjoy it. I am, I know I'll miss it, but I am looking forward to spending a little time other places besides City Hall. Thank you very much. I also do have to thank my husband greatly, because he had dinner on the table every night I came home, so it's been great.
Wow. Hey.
Thanks, Don.
You're gonna, you're gonna... Come around, shake everybody's hand, Sandy. Okay? And we'll, and we'll be gentle. Well, some of that time that Sandy was on the city council, I was on the city council too, and so I had an opportunity to serve alongside her and, and know that she really has the, you know, the city of Riverton heart. And thank her for her service and the time that she's, she's given us. The next item of business this evening is the adoption of ordinance 17-016, third and final reading, Title 13 revision. Would the city clerk please read ordinance 17-016 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 17-016 on third and final reading. An ordinance amending Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13.20, Service, Sewer Service System to repeal, to revise Section 13.20.340, Collection Fees and Charges, Rates Generally, of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 17-016 on third and final reading.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Cody.
Aye.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Aye.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Aye.
Mayor John Baker.
I vote yes and declare that the motion is passed. The next item is the adoption of ordinance 17-018, third and final reading, Title II revision. Would the city clerk please read ordinance 17-018 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 17-018 on third and final reading. An ordinance amending Title II, Administration and Personnel, to revise Chapter 2.12, City Clerk, and establish Chapter 2.13, Finance Director, of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective...
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 17-018 on third and final reading.
No second reading, sir.
No, it's third and final.
So moved.
Second.
It's a second here.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Aye.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Lance Cody.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Mayor votes aye and motion passes. The next item of business is a public hearing and consideration of Ordinance 17-021, first reading, Title 8 revision. City clerks report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. In Title 8 in the Garbage Collection and Disposal, Chapter 8.12, we had reviewed the rates in that chapter, wanting to make it similar to what we did in the sewer and the water chapters. When we reviewed that chapter, Mr. Butterfield and I went through the entire chapter to make sure that there wasn't anything else that needed to be changed, and sure enough, there was. So, the first part of the ordinance is removing the rates and just having the same language in there that we do in the water and the sewer. The placement of containers, it said that they would be on the backside of the sidewalk, and that's not where containers are placed. They can't be blocking any of the sidewalks, so they're placed in the curb. So, removing some language there. There was also a section in the code that said that any garbage or materials placed in, upon, or adjacent to any container would be by the city, but the city does not pick up items that are adjacent to containers or left in the alley for collection. We don't have the manpower for one, and the cost is high as well. And then, in the, in the monthly payment and the failure to pay section, there was just some inconsistencies in the code. In some places, it says the 15th of each month is when the bills are due. In this section, it said that they were due 10 days from the date of billing. The bills are due on the 15th of each month, and so we're suggesting the change there, to change that. And then, just the changes in the failure to pay to be seven calendar days rather than five calendar days, to be able to send shut-off notices.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please read Ordinance 17-021 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 17-021 on first reading, and ordinance amending Title 8 Health and Safety, Chapter 8.12 Garbage Collection and Disposal, to revise Sections 8.12.020 Fees for Sanitation Services, 8.12.210B Placement of Containers, 8.12.250 Depositive Refuse, 8.12.290 Monthly Payment, 8.12.320 Failure to Pay of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Your Honor, I would move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we open the public hearing. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and address yourself and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue? There being no, no one to speak, the Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and I declare that the public hearing is now closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 17-021 on first reading.
Your Honor, I make the motion that we adopt Ordinance 17-021 on first reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there a discussion?
Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Mike.
I have a question. Does, where we have the, we're talking about garbage services, garbage and sanitation services, does this change that we made in the payment terms and the late fee timing and all that, does that match what we have for water and sewer also, since those sort of all get billed together?
Your Honor.
Yes?
Yes, it does. The correction in the code or the change that we're asking to be made in the ordinance here is to be in the same as what is in the water and the sewer in our code right now.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cody.
Your Honor, I'm curious, could, could we clarify, is there any process where a citizen can contact the city for pickup of garbage that isn't in or on, as opposed to adjacent to? I mean, I understand we're taking out the adjacent to, but is there a process where they can still get some of their debris picked up?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Yes, there is. We have a tag system in place. Mr. Butterfield can give more detail on that.
Okay. Your Honor, Ms. Watson is 100% correct. Our residents do have an opportunity to contact our city, and then they can tag items that are large, that don't necessarily fit in their canisters or need an extra pickup. So, yes, we do accommodate that. Okay. Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next item is public hearing and consideration of ordinance numbers 17-022 and 17-023, repeal special municipal officer and establish code enforcement officer. Could we have the interim city administrators report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. So, following the work session last week when we had Mrs. Albright give you information regarding code enforcement, we're doing exactly what we said we were going to do. We brought an ordinance forward for you to consider. We can't consider one without the other. The first ordinance is repealing special municipal officer, and then it's also establishing another code that establishes code enforcement. The distinction I'd like to make with code enforcement, and both Kristin and I got a little frustrated on this topic, because code enforcement means several different things in several different communities, and so to find a standard of what code enforcement is, is really unique to that, that community. But I, what I would like to say is this ordinance that we are trying to establish is an ordinance that provides a safe and pleasant environment for the citizens. It is also used to educate the public on what they can do to make a healthy, safe environment, not only for themselves, but for their surrounding neighbors. So, the duties that we've outlined for the code enforcement officer is the prevention, detection, investigation, enforcement of violations of ordinances regulating to public nuisance, public health, safety, and welfare. And I think that is really the embodiment of what we're trying to accomplish by changing, repealing one code and establishing the other. So, we're asking for your consideration on both of those ordinances.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we open the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Seeing none, Your Honor, I would move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and I now declare the public hearing to be closed. So, this item is consideration of ordinance 17-022, first reading, repeal special municipal officer. Would the city clerk please read ordinance 17-022 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 17-022 on first reading, and ordinance amending Title 2 Administration and Personnel to repeal Chapter 2.30 Special Municipal Officer of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 17-022 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion.
I was just looking at 8.24.020, and it says that the code enforcement officer, primary duties would be prevention, detection, investigation, and enforcement. It's my understanding that, that the actual enforcement, or I guess, the way when I think of enforcement of violations of ordinances would actually, if it came down to a citation or something like that, would be carried out by the police department. Is that still the intention here to have? It's mainly going to be actually investigation of code violations, or am I mistaken there?
Your Honor, maybe I'm using the wrong term with enforcement. What I considered enforcement is she's following the code to the full extent that she can. And so, maybe we need to distinguish the difference between not issuing citations but following the processes outlined that she can use.
Right, and I guess that does make sense, because we are talking about the provide, you know, providing notice, ensuring compliance, that kind of thing. I guess I'm just kind of looking at that word enforcement, and I don't, you know, if we're intending on having that be something that's still carried out by the police department as has been, I just don't know if there would be a different way to word that.
Your Honor, I'd be happy to bring that forward next as an amendment and change that verbiage.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Lance.
Is the reporting relationship to the Community Development Director typical of a code enforcement officer compared to, say, reporting to the Chief of Police, since they would work together in, in the ultimate enforcement of, of the code? Is that a typical process across the state, or are we, again, like you mentioned earlier, unique depending upon the municipality?
Yes, we are unique. Yes. And we have had questions, I know over the 10 years, we had questions of where is code enforcement established? Who do they ask? Who her supervisor is? So, that's why we thought it was important to put it in here that she is part of the community development. Now, we can certainly take that out. I don't know if that would be restructured in the future or not. We can certainly leave that out if the council felt that that would be appropriate.
Okay, excuse me. I'm confused.
Okay.
Okay, it seems like this discussion is more appropriate dealing with 17-023, which is the establishment of a code enforcement officer, as opposed to the repeal of the special municipal officer.
Sometimes we conflate things.
Am I...
You would be correct.
He started it.
I know he did. I know he did, and I'm, I'm just a little slow here on picking up on this, because these are, these are so intertwined.
Right, and the report actually has them together too, so I just kind of have it in my mind that we're dealing with both of them, but you are correct. We're just dealing with the, this really should just be discussion on the...
Repeal.
Repeal of 170022.
That's right.
That's it. That's all we're doing, is repealing.
We're just gonna repeal these, this code related to a special municipal.
I swear you read the other one. Didn't you read the other one? You, you read O22?
The first one.
Oh, wow. Totally missed.
So, we have...
I was still looking forward. Looking forward to talking about the other.
Right. So, the question's been called for. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Okay, 16, consideration of ordinance 17-023, first reading, establish code enforcement officer. Would the city clerk please read ordinance 17-023 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 17-023 on first reading, and ordinance amending Title 8 Health and Safety to establish Chapter 8.24 Code Enforcement of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. So, the Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 17-023 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion?
Ditto, from what I said before. Just what Tim and Lance said.
Your Honor, I think Councilman Cody raises a good issue. I think that sentence should be removed from the ordinance. It could possibly at some time go under the police department and not be with community development if there is a restructuring, or if we find that that's a better place for code enforcement in the future. So, instead of tying, tying that to a ordinance, I believe that needs to be deleted.
Is it typical, I'm sorry, Your Honor?
I'm, okay, go ahead.
Is it typical that the ordinance would direct who they report to? Is that a, do we, I'm sorry, new, that, that positions are in ordinance specified who they report to?
No, but I thought I'd start a new trend.
Okay.
It didn't work. I'd still be happy to remove that.
That way, we do have the freedom of if it makes sense to report to the, to the chief, great. If it's the city administrator, great. If it's community development, great. You can make that decision.
Yes.
Yeah, I think removing that just kind of gives you a little bit more freedom to...
Yes.
...make sense. Go ahead, Tim. I guess I would say I want to have, of course, my comments from before still apply to this, because I just made them at the wrong point. The other thing I was considering is, you know, when we had the special municipal officer, we had to have a specific ordinance setting that position out, because it was special. I mean, it was unique. You know, typically with other positions that we have in the city, we don't have them specifically set out by ordinance. Is there any particular reason why you think this would be necessary to do that? With code enforcement, I guess, the one reason I could see it being useful is when we're gonna make reference to code enforcement later on in the ordinances, we need to make clear who that is and define who that is. But, I mean, is that basically what we're going for? It's just making sure when we make reference later in the later ordinances, we're gonna be looking at that we have clear who code enforcement is?
Yes.
Okay.
And, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Again, this practice has been in motion for code enforcement five or six years, Rosie. Again, we're trying to be very transparent of what we're doing. We're in, we're doing code enforcement. We're not doing the special municipal officer process.
Wasn't it, wasn't it explained that the court enforced, the code enforcement came from various parts, and we're pulling it all together so that it's legible, findable, and reviewable versus helder-skelder through the, the codes that we had, the various codes that we had? And that's the reason. We're trying to pull it all together as one piece versus just grains of sand through the lots of wheat.
Yes. For instance, Your Honor, Mr. Butterfield and I were talking today about a section of the code when it comes to cracks in the sidewalk. Is that really a function of Department of Public Works? I don't think it is. I think that's a function of code enforcement. So, that's a piece that we'll pull under code enforcement and take out of Public Works.
And, Your Honor, again, in 8.24.10, it says the code enforcement division. So, we're sort of establishing a division, not just a officer. So, I, and I guess, and I don't mean to be nitpicky, but I guess, are we looking for a division within the code that is going to be code enforcement type issues? Is that what we're gonna eventually have? Or is it...
Your Honor, I would be happy to change that as well. I think I'll just start over. I consider that a part of the division of community development. It makes sense to remove that now that we're removing Community Development Department. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that as well.
We don't want to be creating additional divisions within the government that we...
Absolutely.
Deal with.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Can we have a division?
Okay.
Okay, we've got, so, so we've done considerable adjustment here but haven't put any language
into it. Should we...
Just removed it all.
Should we, yeah, we've removed some language. Should we table this? No, we shouldn't. We, we want to keep moving on it, okay? So, so what kind of a motion can we have here? Can we, are we, are, can we go ahead with this and approve it as it is right now with the idea in mind it's second reading? It's gonna come back with some changes.
And I think we could even just move to amend to remove the he or she is under the direction of the Community Development Department, to remove that line at the end of eight point two-four oh two oh. And I'd also move to remove the, to amend it to remove the word division in eight point two-four oh one oh.
Okay. All right.
So, I'd make those motions.
Second.
So, that's, so that's second, moved and seconded to amend. So, is there any discussion on the amendments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendments have been passed. Okay, so now we're back on the original motion. So...
Is, Your Honor, I'm just noting, noting the structure. There's two paragraphs of eight point two-four point zero one zero. Should there be?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Clear that this is not my best work.
Okay.
I would be happy to move on.
Amazing that she got it done with one hand.
I don't think it requires an amendment on that one. I think...
Okay, so there's, so, so we do anticipate that we'll see some adjustments when we see this in second reading and probably don't want to put it in consent, right? As well, yeah, we won't put it in consent. We'll leave it open so that we can go ahead and, and work on it in second reading because we're, we're gonna see some new language, is that?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, so are we, are we to a position where we could vote on this now?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, mayor votes aye and motion passes. Okay, Council Committee reports and Council Members' Roundtable. Ms. Gibbon, have you got anything for us tonight? Nothing. Mr. Peterson?
Yes, this weekend, we had the opportunity to host twelve veterans from around the United States. We had some from Texas, Ohio, Maryland, California, a couple from Wyoming. They came in for the Hunting with Heroes. It was an awesome experience to go out there. I had breakfast with them Wednesday morning, presented one of them with a rendezvous pen that was graciously given to me by Mrs. Bolander. And I went out and I saw them Saturday and nothing but huge thanks for the way Riverton treated them. They had meals at several of the establishments and they just get treated like royalty out there, which I think is what they deserve. So, several people get involved with that. A lot of landowners out there donate their tags so these guys can come out and have an experience and, you know, a lot of them, it's the only time they really get out and do anything. So, it was really cool to see those twelve guys, twelve men, come out and be able to enjoy what we enjoy daily, just lovely Wyoming.
Great. They came from where?
There was two from California, Maryland, Ohio. I think there was one from Texas, a couple from Wyoming.
Okay.
So, they were, they were spread out pretty good.
Good.
One, one of the kids that came out actually worked for me twice throughout our careers.
Really?
So, it was kind of a neat little reunion to see him.
Really?
It was fun.
Small world.
It is indeed.
I'll be darned. Thank you.
Thank you.
You had. Kyle?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Mike?
I did get to go to the airport board meeting Friday, I think it was? Yes, last Friday. We did get a really good report, which I assume we're going to get in the future regarding the, you know, the eclipse event at the airport. They had a lot of airplanes there and, again, our, our boarding numbers are up and everything is really taking a positive turn for the, for the better at the airport. And so, it was very successful and the staff was complimented on, on, by the general public that visited up there on, on the great job they did in having the airport prepared and it was very organized and, so, I mean, it was very, very nice to hear, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ann Cox, anything?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing. Mr. Godey, anything for us tonight?
I, I guess I just want to maybe take a moment and, and echo Mr. Warpness's concerns. I appreciated his thoughts on the Safeway store. Interestingly, that store is in my ward and I, I really take it to heart that it's, you know, while it's bounced around town in several locations over the years, I'm, I do want to maybe challenge council as well as other leaders in the community to be more vocal about efforts that are going on, if there are efforts going on, to, to do what we can to either save the space or fill the space or whatever is necessary. I think from an economic development standpoint, we all realize the impact of a empty building on our main drag and we, we need to prevent that as much as possible. So, I've already shared a few things with ideas with a few of you and, and want to put myself out there as willing to help in whatever way possible to see what can be done. I don't know. I don't know what can be done. I'm still new, but I hope we can do something. That's all I have.
Thank you. City Administrator? Ms. Bolander, you got anything for us?
Your Honor, the only thing I have is, again, is to recognize Sandy for her years of service and she will be missed in this organization as well as Mr. Watterson and it's, it's individuals that have that kind of longevity in the organization that, that are missed and it takes a while to replace that, but sincerely hope that they enjoy their retirement.
Good, thank you. Well, we certainly share concerns about loss of, of a significant business in, in Riverton. And today, interestingly enough, so it's been in the newspaper, today, interestingly enough, I received by return receipt requested registered mail, the official notice from Safeway and Albertson's for the closing of the store. So, in that, so, a week, okay, so it's, you know, been out there for a week and today I got the official notice. Okay? With a list of people that I could call if I had concerns. So, I've made some calls, but I haven't gotten any, I, I just get to talk to answering machines and that may be the plan, I don't know, but at any rate, we'll consider, we'll continue to try to pursue that. And, and then I, you know, I know that Ida Ink and Kevin Kerszynick are, are working on it and, and so, we may have something, you know, in the works, but I, I really don't, I really don't know what that goes and, of course, it's interesting, you can't, you wish you could entice people to come down and do business and, and yet, you know, short of the city saying that we'll take over the operation of Safeway Store, I suppose that's an op, an option that we... Huh? See?
You don't want to run a retail.
Well, you see, and the problem is, we're, we're not in that, we're not in the grocery business and, and so, that would be, that would be crazy, you know? But, you know, when you look at losses like they're reporting, I haven't seen any data to support that, but when you look at losses that they're reporting, then that's got to be fairly significant and, you know, and his response to us, I guess, was that if we had really wanted to keep Safeway healthy, we would have blocked Walmart from coming to town. So, see, I, I don't know how you deal with that, you know, in a, in a, what? A capitalistic system where we primarily are letting businesses operate inside of certain rules and for whatever profit they can make without direct interference in their activities. And, you know, the alternative to that would be a centrally planned economy, okay, where, you know, the profit and loss issue for the store would not be an issue, would not be consideration. Government would be willing to subsidize that operation in some way to make sure that it functioned. I don't, I don't think that's where we're at. So, I don't, I don't know where we can go with this, but I know that there's certainly a lot of people who are concerned about it and would like, would like that store to stay in place and, and certainly the location seems to be an appropriate one for a grocery store. And, and so, because of that, you know, what is it in the real estate business? It's all about location. And so, I'd be surprised if the store remains vacant, but at the same time, there isn't any real plan for that turnover to take place and, and it would be interesting if you could get ahold of somebody at Albertson's and they could say, oh, don't worry about it, there's, you know, something else going on. But obviously, the letter that I got today was one that was crafted by attorneys. So, they're, they are making sure that they have, they're making sure that they have dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's associated with their union contract. That's, that's their, I think that's their primary concern. Okay? Let's see, we have a meeting next week. WAM, Region Four, is gonna be in Casper at the Ram Coda and that's Thursday and it starts at five o'clock. And then, we have an opportunity later in the evening, goes, goes for some time in the evening, to visit with our senators and representatives from Region Four and try to convince them of things and concerns that we have. Maybe we can get them to deal with Safeway. And, and so, I think that'll, so, Holly, you're gonna go? And I'm planning on attending. I don't know if any other...
That's the twenty-eighth.
It's the twenty-eighth. I don't know if anybody else from the city council would like to attend that meeting. WAM is organized into, or do we have six regions? I think we have six regions in the state and, so Fremont County and Attraona County make up Region Four. And so, this meeting, we've had the meeting, hosted the meeting here a couple of times and, and so, I guess it's our turn to go to Casper.
Did we get a notice or an email or something? I didn't get anything.
It's, I don't think you're on there yet. I can forward it to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Please.
Okay. Okay, so, so there's an opportunity for us to learn a little something about the WAM agenda for the coming legislative session and, and an opportunity to discuss those issues with our representatives. So, if we can, if we can do that now, because of that, there is a conflict that evening. The, there's a barbecue scheduled for Alliance Against Domestic Violence, which the month of October is, is their month to observe that. And I've been invited to attend that but won't be able to go. And so, if there's somebody here that would like to represent the city, would you?
I was planning on attending anyway.
You were planning on attending? Great, okay.
Your Honor, I'm also speaking for that. I've been invited as a guest speaker.
And you'll be there?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, okay. So, we've got that, we've got that covered and I invited Sidney Moller to come to city council and, and so, you may hear from her to get her on the agenda for the meeting in October, okay? So that she could come and tell us about domestic violence awareness and what they're Okay, thank you. The next item is executive session. The Chair would entertain a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of personnel, considering the employment, employment, right to practice, dismissal, complaints or charges against a public officer, professional purpose, or employee in accordance with Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A two and for the purpose of considering offers, tendering wages, salaries, benefits, or terms of employment during negotiations in accordance with Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A ten.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. We stand convened into executive session at eight eighteen. And we'd invite Ms. Bolander and Ms. Watson to join us. Here we go. Okay, so, entertain a motion to reconvene into regular session, the motion by Lance to reconvene and seconded by Tim. And so, all, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're back in regular session at eight thirty. And action items, the Chair would, let me say that we have reached an agreement with Tony Anthony Tolstead as the new city administrator for the city of Riverton. He is currently serving as the city administrator for Douglas. He's been there for about six years and he was a finalist when we interviewed and hired Stephen. So, we've met him before. He's, has favorable reviews from his work in the state of Wyoming. Douglas hates to see him go. We love to see him come. He's excited to be here. He wants to raise his kids here in Riverton. And, and so, I, I think we have an opportunity here for a long relationship with this guy. And so, my recommendation to the city council is that we hire Tony and I'd appreciate a motion and that support.
So moved.
Second.
So, that's been moved and seconded that we hire Anthony Tolstead as the new city administrator and extend a contract to him. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then, the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the regular council meeting. Kyle made the motion, Tim seconded it, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we're adjourned at eight thirty-six.